All right, I would like to call to order the Dover School Committee meeting at 5:30, October 22nd at Dover Sherburne Middle School. Hello, everybody. Unfortunately, Rachel cannot make it, but we have a quorum and we're good to go. The first, or actually, second agenda item we have are community comments. Do we have any?
I'll wait till...
Hearing none. We will move on to our report section where Ms. Dial, you have the principal's report.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Laura, how are you?
Hi. I appreciate the opportunity to share out about what's happening in Chicory. I got the report that I submitted to committee the other day. I started off sharing about the geodesic dome. I want to thank the committee very much for allowing that to go forward. It's been very well received. We've had it open during parent-teacher conferences to let parents walk through it. There was a lovely ceremony the other day for the student himself to recognize him and to get that he's getting to the school. The technology, we've been sharing with educators so they can get familiar with it themselves before sharing it with their students. And the dome is being used for many different reasons, from just a read-aloud with a class with no technology to using the technology later on. So we're thrilled to have it. We greatly appreciate the approval and we're pleased to have that. Under curriculum and learning, the RTI model that we have this year is moving ahead full blast under the direction of the Lynn team and Priscilla Stephan, our emergency specialist. There is regular communication, regular guidance, and a tremendous amount of support. What is different this year is that we have educators paired together to be working on this model. So they have a colleague to support them through a more intensive model this year, and it's very effective. Last week, the intervention started with the progress monitoring. We've always done that, it's just more... This year, it's terrific. We're very excited about having Petri Elo come and work with us as educator across the district on phenomenon-based learning, which is a nice extension from the project-based learning that we've been focusing on. Another area under curriculum and learning, we're thrilled to have understanding our differences continuing to come back into the school system, which is largely supported by the PTO and parents. And oftentimes, certain students and their parents coming back to talk about what certain disabilities might be like for them to increase understanding. Professional development continues along. We're so grateful for the support that the district's administration provides for that. The professional growth and evaluation system, we've passed a major hurdle that we come across every fall. On October 15th, all the teams' goals are in. Many of the teams adopted the common goals that were set forward by Assistant Superintendent Beth McCoy. And taking that model that we started, several of our teams have also started offering common goals, so we appreciate that. We have some special events coming up. This Friday is movie night in an effort to build more community-based events. We changed that from a movie night, which is students looking at a screen, to a lot more interaction through playing games. We're also looking forward to the special night coming up. The book fair has been in progress during parent-teacher conferences. And something new on the docket, we have a film movie, which was requested by some parents, and we're happy to offer that outside of the school days as a club.
I do. There is a program missing that my children haven't enjoyed, and I was wondering if there's any way we could bring it back. It's Fit and Lit.
Oh, yeah. Fit and Lit is something that was the brainstorm and the baby of our retired librarian. And so we have some new things coming in here with our new librarian, Hannah Richards. We'll be continuing some of the programs that get particularly about reading and learning, but we're letting our new faculty members create their own vision out. So the current book fair is designed to encourage a love of reading and getting books in people's hands, and we'll still have another book event later in the year. And that special day right before the February vacation where everybody just reads all day. We don't have the traditional classes. Kids often come and they're cozy pajamas and so forth, and everyone just reads for the day, and it's read, too, and it's a really special day. But we're allowing that flexibility and wanting to continue the special days that we've had around reading, but also letting our faculty members bring some new ideas.
Okay. Is she open to continuing that, or has...
There's some things we've talked about. That one in particular, I think we're letting go with a change of faculty.
Okay.
Go for it.
Are you all set, Leslie?
Yeah.
I was wondering, I was thinking we should send a formal thank you to the Make-A-Wish and to the family, so, from the school committee?
I think that's a nice idea.
On some letterhead or something?
To express our appreciation for what they did. And Laura, I just, when I was looking at the understanding our differences, someone, two people in the last week have mentioned this film to me that the actor Chris Cooper did. It's an hour-long documentary. It's called Intelligent Lives, and it's about intellectual disabilities. I think his son, I haven't watched it, it is available on Amazon, so I was going to preview it, but it was on NPR recently, and then a couple of people sent me the links about it. So I don't know if it's something that kids can see or would be incorporated in that, but I just wanted to raise that because it's supposed to be excellent, so it's on my list when I have a free moment to...
Well, I would love to know.
It's called Intelligent Lives, and it might be something to, or at least to send to the parents, I don't know, somehow to distribute or screen.
I will check that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I guess I have another one. I would really like to go through the dome. Can parents go through it and experience it and when or how?
Absolutely. It's open during this parent-teacher conference period when we got a lot of parents coming in. You're welcome to go on your own. Just head up there if you like, or stop in the office and ask for someone to go over.
Okay.
Yeah, we want parents to go in and see it.
What is that?
Okay, great. Before the next meeting, maybe we could all do it together, because rather than to keep...
Our next meeting is in the morning.
Oh, that'd be perfect, right?
So we can maybe do it if everyone's able to come a little early. I know you sent an email out to the school committee saying during the grand opening, but if there's an opportunity to do a quick tour before, unless we can make it over, if anyone can make it over during parent-teacher conferences.
It's that morning meeting.
It's, the meeting is going to be November 19th at 8:15. It's around budgets.
Okay.
November 19th, maybe I said 18th, but November 19th.
I have 8:30, is it 8:15?
Well, 8:15 is in the bottom of the agenda. Why don't we start at 8:15, and then that gives us that 15 minutes.
Can we do that? Does that work?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea. Thanks, Leslie, and we look forward to seeing it.
Yeah. Okay, 8:15.
I just have a couple of quick questions. When is Mr. Elo coming? Is it scheduled this week, or is it next week, or...
He's coming next week.
Oh, great.
He will be here for a three-hour training for educators who choose to participate on Wednesday and Thursday. He's working with a teacher at each one of the schools, and Mr. Elo will be looking at a lesson, as I understand it, if I could explain more, but working on a lesson that's already in existence, flipping it around to be more student-centered, to be more project-based-oriented, and then they will be co-teaching that. We'll capture it on video to share out with other educators. And he's also offering in Chicory a one-hour condensed version of the three-hour course on phenomenon-based learning. So we're really excited about all those opportunities, so thank you for making that happen across all the schools.
That's great. And then on the understanding our differences, I like how we spelled out what the grades are focusing on. Is that going to cycle through, so every grade? Because you mentioned that it's in the upcoming weeks. Is it just, like, for example, kindergarten just gets allergies, or are you going to cycle it through from grade to grade throughout the year, or is it just a one-time?
What we've done the past couple of years is to have it segmented like this. Kindergartners tend to understand allergies more than they could some of the other disabilities, and our hope is that for kids who are with us from kindergarten or pre-k all the way through grade five, that over that period of time, they will, they'll be exposed to all of these different experiences and the ways that people are, and so that that cumulative effect will give them that...
So as you move from grade to grade, then you would get each sort of topic.
Can I interject? Because I was involved in, when this model came about, it used to be just in one grade they would hit all of them during the year, and I think a lot of parents felt like, that's not really sending the message that we want, that this is an ongoing area that we should, our kids should be focused on. So these are age-appropriate, there was a lot of discussion at the time of the, like, what would be age-appropriate for each grade, and it was very carefully thought out, kind of what that hierarchy was, so...
And we use this model so that if we have a student with a particular profile that maybe isn't part of the existing understanding our differences curriculum, then we may invite that family to do a presentation, because it's really about all the peers understanding what things are like for particular children. Not necessarily particular children at Chicory, but just having a greater understanding so we can broaden our horizons. We wanted to do that.
Super. Anything else? Thank you very much. That was great. Lot going on. Next, we have the warrant report. From there, we can just kind of go through the whole finance.
So the warrant report's just your monthly report that Leslie has gone and hopefully reviewed all those warrants on your behalf and signed. Any questions, you can always call us and come see whatever you'd like in detail. Our, the first report for fiscal year '22 is in your packet, and just basically summarize, most of your salaries are encumbered, so we're starting to see what the full year is going to look like. I did point out that we've had quite a few post-budget staffing changes that have had favorable results on your budget to actual line items in the teacher line items. I would say there's probably been at least five or six either departures, unannounced retire, late announced retirements, or changes within positions that have caused some of these salary variances. On your educational assistance, I did note, and as Laura also noted in her report, there are some vacancies in that arena, so we are still filling those, and that's why you see unencumbered funds in the EA line item. Substitutes and custodial services, the money that's left there, we incur that as we, we record that as we incur, so that will, you'll see dwindle down as the year goes by. We do have a couple of long-term substitutes already in place, so that number is already encumbered in your substitute line item.
Okay.
On expenditures, it's really early in the school year, but we have got ahead and encumbered transportation, our standard building maintenance contracts, and most of the utilities. I think the tech oil bid came in after we met last year, so I just wanted to share with you that was locked in at just a little over $2 compared to the $2.28 that we were at last year, and so that will provide some savings in your utility line item, because we continue to follow the warrant committee's guidance, which has a little bit higher of a rate. But that is always in flux, and so that's probably the better way to budget. Any questions on salaries or expenditures? Okay, on added district, we still have some placements that were waiting to be finalized, but the majority of this, of the census as of right now is reflected in your statements. We have seen substantial activity, both in different placements, new placements, people leaving the district, and I will provide you a more detailed report on that in November when we roll out the budget. But we are looking at a little bit of a negative variance in added district right now, but keep in mind that you have your full circuit breaker that's there to sort of cushion that if need be. And we are also excited to say that the state is starting to reimburse circuit breaker at the mandated rate of 75% this year, so it's easy for us.
They have money somewhere.
It makes the accounting much easier, but we have not gotten the region's circuit breaker finalized yet, and as you know, the region's circuit breaker is where the majority of Dover and Sherburne's monies are, so I don't have that number to share with you, but we're expecting to be finalized by the end of October. So your next report, I'll be able to tell you what your circuit breaker is.
Okay.
Did you get our guidance letter yet?
No.
Okay.
Is it coming?
It's done, so I would assume...
We usually get it in our office, it'll come hard copy through the mail, so...
I'll nudge, but we approved it at the special time meeting, so like, it should be...
Oh, okay.
Like, it should be...
Okay, great. No, that's good to have. Okay, perfect. I'll be on the lookout.
It's going to be a little different this year, so just let me know if you have questions. I don't think you, well, it's pretty straightforward, but it's different than past years.
Great, well, good to know, and we'll be on the lookout for that then, because as we know, we're actually starting to build the budgets right now, because November, your first pass will be presented. Great. That's all we have on the monthly report.
Great, thank you. Item five, you'll see the enrollment report, which hasn't changed from last time, which is consistent, which is good.
Yeah, those are the, so those are the October 1st numbers that we'll use in, for our projections. We'll build off of those, that's where we start as we go into the budget process. The only thing to highlight there is that we were, in fact, pretty comfortable at grade five, and that's something we're going to have to look at moving forward as we look at the projections. But essentially, we went from 477 to 482. The 491 includes preschool. So we went up five students. Not a big bump. And if you keep in mind that our guideline is between 17 and 22 students, we're doing well.
Grade three is pretty robust.
That's the one to keep an eye on, right?
Yeah, we do need to keep an eye on that. I agree totally.
And your kindergarten, too, that's sort of a higher starting point, because that's the grade that we see grow a little bit between K and first sometimes, so... But one thing that's good for me, I always think, so if you take your guidelines to have four sections in each grade, your range is 68 to 88, right? So that's, that's the number, I think that's, that I always play around with when you're looking to see how many, sort of where you are. And so we're, most, a lot of these grades, we're in the sweet spot, we're right in the middle, which is great.
Yeah.
And the important thing is that I think we worry about this both Dover and Sherburne, is swings. And you may recall in the spring and last winter, we were worried about the swings because of the houses that were on the market, and it ended up being a total of five students. So things tend to work themselves out, that's why those projections are so important to us, because they come in pretty close.
Well, so in theory, as we grade five graduates, and you look at the other sections, if there is a need for an additional class, we have that currently covered.
Right. I think that was our thought process last year, is that we kept that extra section for potential incoming that would throw one of your other grades over.
Right.
So we sort of, we knew that we were leaving ourselves some latitude for some future grades if they end up growing past your section four range.
Well, we're fortunate to be able to do that.
Right.
Sean, as of now, you're not thinking of reducing any, like, because of grade three and possible projections, right?
Right, yeah. We wouldn't make any of those projections really until probably January anyway. Still, still really in the process.
Because in the past, we've actually seen quite a bit of, actually, no, the fluctuation, we still work off of October 1st.
Right. The model builds in all the January movements and such, but I think, too, just if we roll out that first draft, and then we just sort of sit back and wait and make some of the real big decisions more, like in the January timeframe.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Capital, I believe, is the next one. Yeah, so FY '21, capital plan?
Yes, so I had the privilege of having a meeting with Brooke and Mark, and we met with Mr. Kelly also, and walked through a little bit just the process for Mark, but then also were able to be onsite and look at the floors and look at the playground, which are your two items that we have slated for work to be done in 2021. So the lobbies, so the upstairs and downstairs lobbies are slated to be the first of the original floors to be replaced. I won't say, actually, I can't say first, because we did the cafeteria already, but of the main building. So we have price estimates to do the same flooring as we did in the cafeteria, and I will provide those quotes at the November meeting along with, to the capital committee. But I did bump it up a little bit, because I think I want Mr. Kelly to go back and look at some of those extraneous rooms on the first floor, so we don't leave weird pockets to do. So maybe I'm going to take a look at the music room and some of those rooms, so we start looking at it in sections. Because you'll see, looking out at the five-year, we took all the floors and we decided what makes sense is to do it by wing. So you would do the classrooms and the hallways, so you would do the K1, the 2, 3, and the 4, 5, and so that's where you see the 100,000, that's in '22, '23, and '24. From a work standpoint, that's probably the easiest to manage for our staff and to make sure that we can get it done in one summer and put the classrooms back in. So that's, that's sort of the thought process on that, knowing that there are some little pocket of rooms that in each of those sections will need to pick up. The playground flooring is something that we have been sort of...
I thought of these, well, it's time.
Yes.
I mean, we were really convinced that...
It is time. So to replace, so we've been...
This is almost dangerous.
Yeah, right. It is time. It's...
It's been on our radar for a couple of years at this point.
The good news I have is that we have a couple of options now. So I think we were pushing it down the road a little bit, because the one option we had looked at, which is to completely replace it, was approaching about $150,000, and that just seemed like a really huge number to undertake. I sent Mr. Kelly off to look at some other playgrounds, to do some more research, and so he's come up with two other options that we're still researching, because I want to make sure, before we tag ourselves, you know, latch ourselves onto one of them, that we fully understand what we're doing. But one of the best options, he thinks, is that you pull up the map that's on the playground floor, but there is already a base there, we would just put a new map down over that base. That saves a lot of money. That pricing probably, we think, is right under 50,000. But I just want to make sure that that's going to give us as long of a lasting flooring as we have now. Part of the cost associated with this is the having to dispose of all that material, because you just can't put it in a regular dumpster because of the content of it. So a big chunk of that is just taking off part of it and throwing away of $150,000. So if we only had to take off a piece of it, it might be more economical. Then there was one other option, the flooring, which I don't think any of us liked.
Yeah. Do you want to explain?
Sure, I can try. It was a little more like a net of rubber, and we thought it could potentially be more of a tripping hazard than any kind of structural support, because there were fairly deep pockets that could just potentially hold water or dirt and stuff, and over time, just be more of a nuisance or hazard than any kind of help.
Right. And the other option is to then just replace it with the safety mulch, and I don't think that is something that's desirable. But I think what we're trying to move forward with right now is the option of just pulling up the top level and putting down it, it would be one complete piece. So that's what we're looking for. We're going to get better quotes, understand it a little bit better, and then our...
We're going to see if there's someone who's done it.
Exactly.
Nearby, we can go look.
But our thought process is that we would not ask the town for this funding, that we would come up with outside forces, outside forces, outside funding, between some of the school committee accounts that you guys have control over, as well as potentially asking the PTO to contribute. We feel like we can fund it with non-town money.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. If we were to pull up the mats, not pieces of the mat, you know, sections, it's pulling up the entire level.
Colored parts here, and then there's a black stuff.
And that's what has to be integrated. That's what's falling apart.
And I guess we would know, hopefully, ahead of time, you know, sort of like if you pull up carpet and you got the mat underneath, sometimes, depending on how it's affixedated or how, whatever the word is, you know, adhere to each other, you don't want to compromise the mat underneath. So we probably should know confidently that we can pull it all up and not house and then cost standards to the...
And there are places where the consultants that were with Mr. Kelly could actually look and see, because you can almost see down to the mat that we were looking at, and in fact, there's a place that we pulled up. So it's actually a pretty defiant flooring that you can, it would just pull, that would pull that off. And the base is where you get your cushion, and that, they had no qualms of patching it in some places, but for the most part, they thought it was totally reusable.
Okay. Patching it being the undermat, not...
The undermat.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be potentially a full complete pull-up.
Wherever it's damaged, because we've had too much wear and tear.
Yeah, like it goes all the way down, so, yeah.
Okay.
So that was the good news that we had, and until we're fully comfortable with it and fully understand it, we put that a little bit higher of a placeholder there, just because I think it's better, as I told Brooke, to come down and to come back and come up for you guys.
And we can fix all of these hazards by wrapping the new mat over, so, I mean, this is a pretty big gap there.
Yep.
Just to your point, I think the subsurface foundation was, had a few pockets, but if I remember correctly, they said they could level that off before capping it with a new surface.
Great.
And then what we do for the town, too, is forecast out your other four years after next year, and so that has pretty much stayed the same as it has been in your plans, except the floor, the flooring projects we took from two years and spread it over three years. And again, these are numbers that we pull directly from our onsite insight report based on their recommendation, their recommendation based on the estimated useful life. As you know, we'll go in the year before and reassess everything. What I think we're doing at all the schools, because they all have roofing projects coming up, both at Pine Hill and Chicory, is to, in fiscal year '21, actually have someone come out and do a formal roof assessment for us, so we understand what the state of our roof is, to get a better idea of how quickly do we need to replace that.
So that $580,000 placeholder is based on the onsite insight number?
Exactly.
Because the building will be how old at that point?
In '22, it's about 20, 20 years old. It opened in, about 21 years old. The building opened in 2001.
So 20 is a typical life for these rubber roofs. They can last longer.
I see.
And we've been fortunate, Chicory not to have had very many leaks or issues at all.
Especially considering you did the air conditioning work.
But none of that was on the roof.
Some of it was, outside of the art rooms.
That, well, just that one.
That one unit.
Right.
The rest were outside.
The rest were all outside.
Right.
The other learning that we had, or I had from the floors, is that the new floor is, like, the cafeteria floor, it does not have to be polished every year, which takes a ton of time in the summer, labor and...
Wax, waste.
And chemicals, right?
A real waste of resources.
So we won't...
So you don't get that ice skating shiny look...
We can live without that.
At the beginning of the full year, but it is much healthier for the environment. And I just read an article yesterday, too, that that new flooring that we've been using is actually really good for sound. So in hallways, it's a much quieter flooring to have than the tiles that we have now.
I think it feels softer, too.
Yeah, a little squishier, right? Yeah.
It's just a little give to it. It's good for our teachers.
I'm curious about the, with the roof, is that, do you know, and you might not know the answer, I might have to go to bury a capital, but is that coordinated with the other roofs in town that we need to, like, float a bomb, like, for...
That I don't know, but that's why then they have us do the five-year, so that they can do that. So they can, so they actually, the capital committee takes this and sort of makes some recommendations of placement for ourselves, based on what, exactly, your point.
Yeah, I know that, I just know that there's a few other buildings in town that need roofs, so you can get a deal for four.
We're sitting under one.
Yeah.
The townhouse also.
Exactly. Exactly. So with your approval tonight of this first draft, and obviously, this is just the first draft, we will submit it to the towns' capital committee that has the deadline, I think it was last week, but I always get an extension knowing that your guys' meeting is now.
Before we do that, does anyone have any other capital items that you might want to bring up? Sort of mentioned in communication, if there is anything that you want to bring up, can bring it up now, or we will have a couple other opportunities, but it's just worth to get it out to think about?
Right, especially if you do it, we need to do some research on it.
Yeah. So keep that in mind if you don't have any... Yeah, so keep that in mind if you don't have anything, just maybe. We're not looking for things to spend money on, but if you have identified something or you have heard something, you know, where the good sort of voice. Our question I always ask is, is there something that there's an opportunity to push forward? Thinking about, you know, some other big expenses coming in a few years down the road to sort of level the ask potentially on capital year over year? For example, these are two line items that aren't overly large, the 18,000 and 13,000. Are we comfortable with them in 2022 or?
Yeah, what we usually do is that we let things run to almost their, in their.
The lifetime.
Expectancy. And if for some reason it happens, I think one year, your hot water heater actually went before the capital had made it through. So we just paid through that, paid through that with our reserve. But we knew we got every, I mean, last bit of life out of it. And it didn't, it didn't cost us any more money to do it that way. So we hate to, again, the onsite insight report is based on industry standards for estimated useful life, not necessarily looking at our usage of the building. So if you think about some of our buildings over the summer, there's, there's a lot of pieces that aren't used 12 months out of the year. So I do feel like sometimes we get a little bit of use, longer useful life on some of ours because of the lower demand on the building.
All right. Well, now's the time to talk about pushing forward if we need to, so.
And the EMS software is really dependent on the region. So that one has been pushed out a little bit over time because we plan to piggyback on that. And we haven't gotten the regions up and running yet. So that one would not be one to potentially bring forward either.
Okay.
But is it the last two years there has not been capitalized?
Correct, right. But I think we're at that point now then with the age of the building where we will start having, obviously, the floors are gonna be a huge undertaking for the building.
Any comments on the capital draft as it's presented? Okay, I am gonna ask for a motion to approve the draft as presented by Ms. Vittori for the fiscal year 2021 capital request.
I'm moving to approve it.
Sorry, do I have a second?
No, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Great, we'll submit this tomorrow morning and we'll be back from capital. So thank you, guys. We'll, we'll keep you updated on the playground.
Yeah, we're going on field trip somewhere.
Field trips to playgrounds.
It's a playground.
All right. We have on here the budget guidance for fiscal year '21.
So this is your opportunity to, like you just asked for capital. If there's anything that you wanted us to explore before your first draft comes out or, you know, anything in particular you wanted to just look at because now you've seen or you saw what happened last year and this year? Any big goals that you have that would impact the budget? It's just an opportunity so you have some input before the first budget's presented and you're like, wait, I, I was thinking about this and this and that. And generally, sometimes there isn't.
Yeah.
Well, assuming you've got input from.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No, it's a team.
One thing I would suggest is looking at the educational assistant ratio across the grades. I know we.
The gen ed.
Yes, yes. So, you know, we're a little heavier in terms of ratio for kindergarten. And then I think we level off. You kids can tell me if I'm off base for one through.
Kindergarten is one per teacher.
Right, so, and then after that, it's.
It's one per grade, except we have added back.
One floater.
One to grade.
One floater and it's being addressed for first grade.
Yeah.
I would consider looking at maybe upping that.
Okay.
I mean, maybe we understand what other similar districts are doing or what we feel is the right number. Talk to some, whoever, whatever research needs to be done to make sure we're thoughtful, but.
There was a period of time where there were two per grade.
Why did we move away from that?
Part of it was, I think initially, that we've, we've seen a large increase on our special ed educational system. So some was redistribution. But I also think a part of it too was just how they were being used, that the times had changed how, what the protocol was. And it just, I mean, you're better off, Laura, saying that. But it wasn't that we stripped it because there was a need. We felt like we took away. I think, I think we felt like we better utilize resources in how we had them allocated.
I would just second what Henry's saying, and I would like to see more EAs added back in, for sure.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful for us to hear.
Yeah, just, I mean, you know, just take a look at it, whether it's based on the age segment of the younger grades or it's the.
Sometimes it's the cohort.
Or I'm just thinking the numbers within the classes. You know, we look at what are our third grade classes, running at 21s. It's just should be thoughtful and, you know, consistent. And now's the time to at least look into it. And then, you know, see what, if anything, can be done or should be done, I should say. Anything can be done, maybe if it should be done.
So this isn't a, a very popular position for me at times. But the truth of the matter is, we have two elementary schools sending into the region. And so I do have, I have to look at the equity as well. So that, that may have factored in at some point that if, sure, if Dover had 40 gen ed EAs and Sherburne had 20, are our kids, as they come up, gonna be equally prepared? So that may have crossed somebody's mind, I don't know.
I think the big was the huge increase we saw in the, in the special ed.
I mean, in 21s.
Logical explanation?
Yeah.
And, but we do, we do keep an eye on kind of how many, because that was one of the things that came out of our special education review from these outside folks was that, in fact, we had really different numbers in terms of special education ed assistance. And we weren't really, they weren't really sure as to why.
We had different numbers from Sherburne?
Yes, very different. And the question was why? And it could very well have been, they were saying, could very well be that you just have just as more kids in Dover that need the support. Or it could be something to do with the way you're utilizing them. So the EAs are something that every system has to look really careful at, or carefully at, and to just make sure that we're using them wisely and, and to, to their greatest benefit. So it's something, but definitely, it's a good suggestion. It's come up before. I believe maybe Adrian brought that up a few years back. So we can definitely look into that.
You know, I brought it up too. Because for my child in particular, I know that those small learning groups are extremely important for him. And he's in that third grade class. He's in the class that's got the 22 kids. So he could benefit from that, for sure. He struggles with the big crowds around him and not being broken down to smaller groups, which the teachers are not able to do without the assistant.
So one of, in response to that, just if I, if I could, Leslie, one of the things that I enjoyed doing this week was actually visiting Chicory during their wind block to see how they were, in fact, doing kind of some of those deeper dives with the kids who needed the more intensive work. And I'm really impressed with the work that Laura and Beth and, and actually Barb Brown on the other side of the river and our literacy specialists, the kind of work that we're doing to infuse that extra support that, that wasn't there before. So we were, our teachers were going with their students to FLESS. And that was by design. That was the original plan, was for their teachers to join their students in FLESS to provide support and to make sure that it stays integrated into their gen ed experience outside of FLESS. But they have gradually, over time, this year especially, moved away from that a little bit so that they can provide that additional support for, if in fact, it may be for, to benefit your, people like your son. But what it's about is really is about that small group instruction and making sure that the kids are getting those additional supports and that we're benchmarking it, that we're paying attention. So it's not just a matter of like, okay, we're gonna spend extra time with the kids. We're actually looking at where the kids are falling short and need additional supports. That's why those smaller groups are so beneficial. So the wind block is, is having a positive effect without the additional assistance. That doesn't mean it couldn't be even better. So it's just something we need to look at.
Can you share an example of what you saw, what it looked like?
Yeah, so in one room, for example, we saw multiple small groups and, and an EA working with a group of three or four kids, a teacher working with probably two kids, and then a lot of the kids working independently.
All from, all from the same grade, different classrooms?
From the same classroom, same grade.
Okay.
And a few of those kids were actually pulled to the room next door, where these teachers are all partnered. So a few of the kids were working with a teacher next door on more intensive intervention. For example, especially around literacy, the basic breakdown of language, practicing that using kind of a Wilson reading model. That's really good RTI. That is what we should be doing. And I always, I always, maybe it's because I'm a little bit conservative with money, but I always want to make sure that we're getting as much bang for the buck. Instead of, what we sometimes do in schools is we throw more people at it instead of really working with what we have to see if we can actually be more effective. And this is a really good example. And I, I give Beth and Laura and Barbara and our literacy specialists all the credit in the world. Our assistant principals have been really influential in making this happen. And I predict that you're gonna see improved results in terms of performance. And that is key because early literacy sets the stage for long-term special ed costs. Everybody knows it, the research is very clear. If our kids are reading and strongly reading by the time they're, and numerate and comfortable with, with addition, subtraction, multiplication, division by fourth grade, the, the trajectory, that's where the achievement gap typically starts that you hear about. And the kids never catch up. So we, we want our kids having that fundamental base or foundation to build upon. So they're doing that now. We're doing that, which I think is fantastic. And we, we're not there yet. So this might be part of it. It might be part of that conversation. And it might be part of the conversation in Sherburne. We just haven't gotten there yet. But I am constantly trying to make sure that we're raising the bar, you know, for both towns because we're one system ultimately when we get here.
Okay.
Great, well, thank you for the consideration and thinking about it.
Yes, thank you.
Our next item is our consent agenda for the minutes from the Dover Sherburne School Committee from September 24th. Do I have any comments or any changes? Henry, now do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented in our packet for the Dover Sherburne meeting on, sorry, as I go back there?
Dover.
Dover School Committee meeting, yes, on September 24th. Brooke, second? Leslie, thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Also, you have communications for the regional school committee meeting and the Sherburne School Committee meeting on the June 11th and June 10th. And then as a reminder, our next meeting will be the morning of November 19th. We'll start at 8:15 and do a quick tour of the biosphere. And then we'll have our meeting. Will that be in the conference room again? So it's a conference room right outside Dr. Reinemann's office is where we usually are. That, I would like to adjourn and then enter into executive session. Poll to enter into executive session for purposes of discussing superintendent's contract and discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, not to return to open session. I need to poll Brooke.
Yes.
Henry, yes. Leslie, yes, I'm sorry. And Mark, yes. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.